Welcome, everyone. I now call the May 2nd, 2023 Regular City Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The City of Bothell is now providing the option of attending council meetings remotely or in person. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Verbal comments may be taken either in person or remotely. Sign-up sheets were provided online by the City Clerk's Office via link from the Agenda. A call-in phone number was provided on the meeting Agenda for members of the public who wish to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our study session item, we will recess and move to Conference Room 107 and adjourn the meeting from there. For those of you in the audience, Room 107 has some seating for the public; however, we will continue to broadcast it in both council chambers and the lobby. For virtual attendees, because Room 107 is Teams-enabled, you will need to use the Teams link provided on the Agenda. As a reminder, you can also watch the meeting on YouTube or BCTV without having to break your connection. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position number. Please say here when the City Clerk calls your name.
Councilmember Zorn?
Here.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manke?
Here.
Councilmember Dodd?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Here.
All present.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For remote meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And we don't have any council attending remotely tonight, so I'm going to move on to meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Seeing none, I'll move on to public engagement opportunities. We have a middle housing community forum coming up on Wednesday, May 3rd, here at Bothell City Hall, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have the bothellwad.gov/middlehousingforum, where you can ask questions and provide feedback about current middle housing proposals. Sidewalk surveys open through May 15th. You can share your thoughts on how we can make sidewalks, paths, and crossings safer for pedestrians. And we've got a dog walker watch class, Thursday, May 18th, at 6:00 p.m. You can learn how and when to call 911 when spotting suspicious activity in your neighborhood. All right. Next up, we have a proclamation for Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Whereas, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed nationally in the month of May, chosen to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese to the United States on May 7th, 1843, and to mark the anniversary of the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad on May 10th, 1869, as the majority of workers who laid the tracks were Chinese immigrants. And whereas this recognition encompasses all of the Asian continent and the Pacific Islands of Melanesia, Micronesia, and Polynesia, and whereas the diverse Asian and Pacific Islander population in Washington State is more than 700,000, making them the second-largest and fastest-growing minority population, and is representative of 48 Asian and Pacific Island nations, and whereas a large percentage of the population in Bothell identify as Asian and Pacific Islander, composed of varying varied ethnicities, languages, and cultures that contribute to our community's progress, success, and vibrancy, and whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have been part of the history of the United States for over 200 years, contributing to the economy, culture, education, politics, art, science, and technological developments despite institutional and systemic injustices, unjust working conditions, prejudice, and discrimination, and whereas even in the darkness of the Exclusion Act and Japanese internment, Asian American and Pacific Islanders persevered, and the rise in racially motivated discrimination, harassment, and hate crimes against the AAPI community cannot erase the resilience, strength, accomplishments, and joy of the people now and throughout history. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, do proclaim May 2023 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the City of Bothell to honor the AAPI community and their inspired character and legacies, and reinforce that education, celebration, and public awareness is vital to our community health. And I believe we have Karya here to accept. Hello. You can go ahead and say a few words if you'd like.
Sure. Good evening. On behalf of the organizations and agencies that serve Asian American and Pacific Islander communities, we are honored, thankful, and grateful to receive this proclamation from the City of Bothell. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for this proclamation, for honoring, uplifting, and celebrating the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities in U.S. We would like to thank for the support and resources made available to CISC and other organizations, agencies, who share the passion of serving and helping people to move on, move up, and thrive. With the support from the city, we are able to provide culturally and linguistically relevant services and programs to Asian immigrants in the City of Bothell and other cities at Eastside. I would like to invite you all to join our first annual senior resource fair at North Bellevue Community Center tomorrow. This is the biggest in-person event that we have ever hosted since COVID pandemic outbreak three years ago. We are anticipating over 200 participants to attend this resource fair and health workshops. Again, we are grateful for this time, space, and opportunity that could observe, honor, celebrate together for the 2023 Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. There's a Chinese parable saying that, together with persistence, resilience, and synergy, we could have the strength and capacity to move a mountain. So let's work together to make this place a better place for everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming here tonight. All right, moving on, we have a proclamation for Affordable Housing Week. Whereas, all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity, and whereas the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines affordable housing as "housing on which the occupant is paying no more than 30% of gross income for housing costs, including utilities," and whereas studies have found that each $100 increase in median rent results in a 15% increase in homelessness in metro areas and a 39% increase in homelessness in nearby suburbs and rural areas, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate-income households, and the need for affordable homes and the number of people experiencing homelessness has remained at crisis levels, and whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employees, and the community as a whole, and whereas, united to raise public awareness, people, organizations, and communities throughout King County are participating in local Affordable Housing Week activities to elevate the critical need to create healthy communities with ample affordable housing, and whereas the City of Bothell endorses the goals, objectives, and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and in doing so firmly recommits itself to ensuring that all people in Bothell live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now therefore, I, Mason Thompson, do hereby proclaim the week of May 7th to 13th, 2023, as Affordable Housing Week. And I believe we have Michael from Nusa here to accept? Or perhaps we don't?
I don't, he hasn't arrived yet.
All right. Well, Michael, thank you. And it's Affordable Housing Week. We'll move on to the City Manager Report. City Manager?
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. First thing, I just want to quickly acknowledge that I'm glad to be back. This is my first council meeting since sometime in March, so really, we won't get into that, but I do want to say a thank you to the executive leadership team and to Deputy City Manager Tony Call. We talk a lot, and as we went through the City Manager recruitment process, talked a lot about leadership styles, and I firmly believe that one person can't do it alone, and I was extremely grateful to have an awesome team behind me to keep things moving forward. So thank you, everybody. Next, some other good news. Wanted to share, if you weren't following along, that at last week's Sound Transit Board meeting, the Board took up a motion and resolution that recommended, that was recommended by the System Expansion Committee, that allocated $5 million from Sound Transit Two funds to support the support work on Northeast 185th Street Improvement Project in downtown Bothell to be prepared for bus rapid transit. So that's extremely good news. We're extremely appreciative of the partnership that we do have as a city and a community with Sound Transit to deliver the BRT service to the community and to the University of Washington Bothell and Cascadia campuses. As you know, Northeast 185th Street was identified by the downtown plan as a transit corridor and needs to be structurally upgraded, use some utilities work, some structure improvement, and it was identified in this fall in the Capital of Facilities Plan that was adopted by council for 2023 to '29. Also tonight, there is an item on the Agenda, on the Consent Agenda Bill 23064, that would be for approval of professional services with RH2 engineering for final design of that project as well. So just another good reminder that things are moving forward, good things are happening, and we're again grateful for the partnership with Sound Transit and this funding that's come to us. And also want to say thank you to Steve Morikawa and Jay Suttori for their support on that project. And finally, also recently, we celebrated Earth Day, and I know there's proclamation for that, too. So Shelby Crowe, our volunteer special and special event permit coordinator, put together some information based on the event that took place in Bothell, and just some good reminders of we have a community coming out of the impact it can make. So for this year's Earth Day and Week volunteer activities, there was a total of six volunteer work parties with a mix of public and private groups, in both city and community events to celebrate our earth. In total, there was at least 150 volunteers and 480 hours served. If you look at what the time of volunteering is estimated at, there's always a good benchmark for that, that 480 hours would equate to $18,062. So really grateful for the volunteer effort itself, but also what it stands for of, again, being committed to making Bothell better for everyone. So thanks to you to everyone in the community who turned out, and I know councilmembers, you all may have volunteered as well. So thank you. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, thank you, and it's good to have you back as well. We love having Tony here with us, but it speaks well to your leadership that you can be gone and things can not really miss a beat. So thank you. Moving on to council committee reports. Councilmembers? Everybody's looking straight ahead and then looks over at me, so I don't think, oh, Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just wanted to give a brief update on the RPC Regional Policy Committee. We had a couple of meetings last week. First meeting, discussions on the Veterans, Seniors, and Human Services Levy, and after a long, hard discussion, a lot of communities around the region are very supportive of the levy itself, and it is moving forward to the King County Council at a 10-cent rate versus a 12-cent rate. There was a lot of conversation around the price increase and what that would do to the taxpayers. I voiced our opinion here in Bothell, was very supportive of the services and what we expect and wish to have the opportunity in our community, but as an RPC representative for SCA, the caucus decided to vote in favor of the 10-cent versus the 12-cent. And so as being appointed by the SCA, I voted for the 10-cent, but I just wanted the council to know that I did voice our support for human services, veterans' services across the region, so.
Councilmember McNeil?
Sir?
Manke?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got three updates to provide tonight. The first is the public, the Council Public Safety Committee met this last week to review the proposed Somers County EMS levy that will soon be coming before council. We also reviewed, actually, just one more thing on that. The levy is a renewal of the current levy that we have and ensures that all residents across the city are paying the same rates for advanced life support services, which are recognized as best in class in the nation. So it's an important levy, and it will be coming before council, I believe, here next few weeks. We also looked at preliminary feedback and gave preliminary feedback on the future fire services model exploration proposal, which will also be coming before council very soon for review. At Somers County tomorrow, we received a presentation on the updated Housing Needs and Characteristics Report, also referred to as the H05 Report. The deck and the report and the many appendices were shared out to council by the City Clerk last week. It's an interesting read. A couple of highlights that I took away from it were nearly two-thirds of the population increase in Somers County between 2010 and 2020 was people who moved here from other states. Within our municipal urban growth area, 50.5% of the folks were new as of 2020 from 2010, so we grew 50.5%. Within the city limits, city boundaries, we grew 17% between 2010 and 2020, and in the next 20 years, they are projecting that the Somers County part of our city is going to need two times the number of housing units that we have today if their modeling and predictions are correct. So I would say, give the report a read. Again, it's pretty long, and the appendices are long, so you might need some coffee or do it while you're doing something else, but there are some interesting items in there and elements in there that I think the council would be interested in reading. And the last one is the Somers County Law and Justice Committee. We reconvene that committee for the first time in three years, so has not met since the beginning of the pandemic. There were a lot of discussions about our work plan and kind of resetting the committee to what the focus is, what the mandate is within Somers County Code and in state law. So we will be reconvening in the next month to talk about what our work plan will look like, what are the most important topics to tackle. One of them that came up was the Blake Decision, and I know Somers County Council is considering legislation, and there are other cities in Somers County already planning on potential legislation. I think the state may call a special session, we don't know. One of the city council members or county council members is also a state rep, and he said that he would put his money on a special session, but there's no way to know yet. So we have until July for the state to take action, otherwise all drugs will become legal in the state. So we'll plan to watch on that, and I'll provide more updates from this committee as we look at, look out into the future and create a work plan. And I think that is the balance. Thanks.
For the benefit of the council, I'll now confess that I cut my City Manager Report from four items to three items. I was going to give an update on Blake Decision, and the betting is closed because now there has been a special session called, so this, late this afternoon, so the legislature's been called back for up to 30-day sessions starting on May 15th. And again, staff will continue to watch activities there. We're not going to wait until the last minute to do anything, but we'll bring something to council in June if it looks like the local passage is necessary, but we were fairly confident that a special session would be called in the state, and it looks like it has.
Last chance, anybody else? All right, we'll move on to visitor comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Written comments submitted to the City Clerk no later than 3:00 p.m. today were forwarded to all city council members and are part of the record. When the clerk calls your name, you'll have three minutes to speak. Please note that council will receive your input, but on the advice of our city attorney, we do not engage in discussion of these topics. Staff will make notes of items requiring follow-up. City Clerk, do we have people signed up?
We do, thank you, Mayor Thompson. We've received written comment from Mark Swanson, who wrote in regarding salmon habitat and real housing proclamation. He is also here to speak tonight, and that's the only written comment we received. The first person to sign up to speak is Newt Agard. Mr. Agard? I'm going to come to the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. We have a timer up there at the dais, and it'll start flashing. It'll turn green when we set the timer. Yeah, it's right, right on top there. Thank you. You'll have three minutes to speak. Once we set the timer. There you go. Go ahead.
Our community is blessed by an excellent Bothell Historical Museum, adjacent to the river, and by an active and dedicated museum society. The visitors are many, as are their appreciative comments after a Sunday docent-led tour, and they who come are of all ages. This year, in March alone, an off-season month, over 400 schoolchildren and their teachers and parents visited the museum on special tours. Unfortunately, the ramp to the popular and history-rich schoolhouse is in need of repairs and has been closed for some years, limiting access by those for whom stairs are difficult. While the interior of the building is staffed and maintained by society volunteers, the building is owned by the city, and it is the city that must reopen the ramp. I urge the city to provide ADA-compliant access to the considerable treasures of the Bothell Historical Museum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Swanson.
Briefly, I just want to say that the black-tailed deer population that hangs around the Swedish cemetery, not going to be too thrilled with the Northeast 185th upgrade. I was lucky when I went to college. I arrived late, fall of 1984, and since I was late, I couldn't pick my roommate. My roommate was picked by WSU Housing. His name was Odier Wula, best roommate I had. He's a Nigerian, son of a Nigerian chief. Brand-new to me, folks. He graduated with a degree in accounting from Washington State University. I lived with him for five months, best roommate I ever had. He had all kinds of friends from Nigeria, Kenya. They're great people. Odie got his master's from Gonzaga University, and he just retired after a year and a half being Federal Way's city manager for eight years. Federal Way, I might add, has the same violent crime rate as Newark City, which we're heading towards. Odie did not retire in Federal Way. He retired in Port Orchard. Bless him, he deserves everything. He's a quality man, as were his friends. Fame, a Kenyan, went through WSU, in three and a half years, got a degree in electrical engineering. I think Amanda Dodd might know how tough that might be. This was a blessing to me, because it taught me the soft racism of low expectations. I am not cursed with that, James Rami. It's not who I am. Yeah, climate change. That's the ticket. Nothing like poisoning salmon by increasing urban densification and tearing out 80-year-old trees to build fourplexes to save climate. I won't go into the details, but you guys know with all this engagement, climate change has less hard science in it than the shroud of Turin has in showing that a dead man came back from the dead. As you know, Washington State's Constitution disallows-
Thank you, Mr. Swanson, your time is up.
-state or municipal-sponsored religions, and that's what you've got, City Manager Standard.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Your time is up.
City Clerk, can you turn your mic on? Thank you.
Yeah, we have one more person in the audience that wishes to speak. His name is Ed Engel. We're going to panel him in right now. Mr. Engel, go ahead whenever you're ready. You'll have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Ed Engel, and I am the Mobility Justice Advocate of the Somers County Transportation Coalition, or Snow Track for short. Snow Track is a mobility management coalition that advocates for connecting people and communities in Somers County and beyond with safe, equitable, and accessible transportation. To do this, we convene public, nonprofit, and private transportation human service agencies to identify mobility gaps and opportunities, especially for our priority populations, including people with disabilities, older adults, youth, low-income households, people of color, and tribes. A unifying issue of cost of priority populations is lower known access or ability to use a personal vehicle. In addition, priority populations tend to be disproportionately impacted by poor land-use patterns and transportation options, increased exposure to air pollutants in household housing and transportation costs, which in turn decrease life expectancy and social economic mobility. On April 19th, during a planning commission meeting, staff and members reviewed the existing comprehensive plans, 19 vision statements for content. One of the key points discussed was accessibility in relationship with provision of human services, safety and security, modes of transportation, and recreation opportunities. Additionally, today, council members will be briefed on community engagement strategies for the climate change portion of the comprehensive plan. We appreciate the staff has laid out some of the potential barriers and challenges that come with community engagement, and we hope that the listed mitigation measures will be used in the process. As Bothell updates and updates the accessibility points of this comprehensive plan engages in its climate change community engagement, Snow Track provides best practices endorsed by such organizations as ARP, Policy Link, and the National Association of City Transportation officials. We recommend setting a goal to reach zero traffic fatalities and serious injuries within the next decade, establishing a data-driven strategic plan that reaches the goal of using the U.S. Department of Transportation's Safe Systems Approach, setting goals to increase housing and transportation affordability to become an age and ability-friendly community by allowing for abundant and dense housing options for seniors to Asian place, fully funding implementing ADA projects to realize the city's transition plan within the next decade, building an all-ages and abilities bikeway network, implementing more robust automated speed enforcement where revenue directed towards physical safety improvements to target streets, completing city-wide regional trails, implementing projects including the citywide bike plan, and also reducing parking requirements on new developments and requiring new projects to implement transportation demand management strategies by contracting with a transportation management association. These policies will improve mobility options for everyone, but they will also act as climate policies. With that, I conclude my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor Thompson. However, if anybody else is in the audience that wishes to speak, please step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes. That's everyone.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'm going to move on to projected agenda discussion. Does anybody have an item they'd like to bring up? If not, I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Zorn?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second? I have a motion from Councilmember Zorn and a second from Councilmember Manke to approve the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Seeing none, City Clerk?
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Councilmember Zorn?
Yes.
Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Alderks?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Councilmember Manke?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Alcabra?
Yes.
Passes 7-0.
All right. We are going to break right now before the study session in Room 107. It is 6:26. We will break for nine minutes, and we will see you at 6:35.
Welcome, council. Let me just attempt. Just want to apologize to you. Heard no complaint. No one's coming to the comments. Everybody can go. Strategic. All right. It is time. I don't have my script, so I'm just going to say that we're in a study session for the con-plan, and I'm going to turn it over to the City Manager standard.
Thank you, Mayor. And we do have one study session tonight. It's a good one, so we are really in the throes of con-plan discussions now, and tonight's study session is really going to be a good opportunity to make sure that things are framed the way that council would expect, and our goal would be is that we start off on this journey with clarity so that by the end, we can all point back to where we started and say, yes, that's where we intended to go. So guiding us in that conversation tonight is going to be Senior Planner.
So guiding us in that conversation tonight is going to be Senior Planner Kirsten Matt, who is project managing and leading the comp plan efforts. Welcome. And she's going to be joined in the presentation as well by Sarah Frost, who's our community engagement specialist, and as always, Community Development Director Jason Greenspan is here to support the team as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kirsten.
So just to sort of frame where we're hoping to go with the discussion tonight, there's kind of two main components that we're hoping to get out of the study session. One is to get feedback on the recommendations that came out of our April 19th study session with Planning Commission, and to see if there's any missing gaps from that. Are there things that you didn't talk about that you wanted to see, or anything that comes to mind that you didn't think that you saw or read about in the recommendations or commission? So an overview of the presentation. First, I want to give a timeline. This is going to be something you'll see with all of my updates moving forward, just to place you in the timeline of where everything's at, remind you what we talked about, what we're going to talk about. A status update on the climate change element, as well as a status update on the finalized community engagement strategy that we're really going to be wrapping up the action on this summer. We'll just go over really briefly the kind of best practices and definitions for visions, goals, policies, and implementation measures. Vision, that we'll currently call the vision, will be calling guiding principles moving forward. And then an overview of the Planning Commission's study session, kind of briefly going over the main topics of conversation that we heard from them, really important to convey. Timeline. We are here in Q2 2023. This is just the 2023 timeline. Just a reminder of what we talked about last time. We got the contracts approved. We started our pre-engagement. That was really scoping out CDOs and people to reach out to, to start putting our working group together. View of the climate element, again, that we currently have in our plan, doping the plan, and then beginning our community profile, which is like a demographic analysis. So in this quarter, the big-ticket items are the draft climate change plan. We have to have a draft by the end of June in order to meet our grant deliverables. Obviously, that draft will be more than open to trends and changes over time throughout the rest of the life of the work, but we do need to have at least a draft by the end of June. We'll also have a draft of our racial equity analysis and toolkit. This will be an expansion of the work that's already being done for middle housing and being expanded to the breadth of the comp plan, and then we'll be using that throughout the life of the work over the summer and revising it over time from what we hear from the community. And then engagement. So summer is going to be big for engagement for us, and we'll get into that a little bit later, especially with a lot of the summertime activities that bring folks out. That's where we're going to be really trying to engage folks with. And then land use alternatives is something we need to identify by the end of June as well, in order for the transportation team to get the work done. So a status update on the climate change element. This is what we've heard from our consultant team that's been doing the groundwork. First component is taking the Department of Commerce's model climate element that they've been developing. They have a draft that was just released and comparing that to what we already have in our comp plan, particularly in the natural environment element. It's really the only place currently we have climate change-specific policies, and then ensuring alignment with HB 1181, the new bill that passed for climate change planning. The second component or assessment is equity. So developing an assessment to figure out where in the city is their vulnerable populations, vulnerable lands, where do those things intersect? Where do we need to focus our efforts? And then economy. So this one's a little bit more about implementation strategies and looking at what are some of the costs and benefits that are potentially going to come out of any of our implementation work. And then the drafting of the plan. So those three tools of assessments are going to all go into putting together the draft plan along with public input we receive. That will be more the revisions over the summer. And then presenting that progress to both the working groups that we're putting together with the CBOs and other folks in the community, the community itself, again, throughout the summer, and then Planning Commission and Council. Like I said, our draft element is by the end of June. I'm going to pass it over to Sarah to speak in a little bit more detail about the engagement work we're going to be undertaking, starting, I guess, next couple of weeks, as I think our first focus groups are happening in May. We've been working with our consultants to get in touch with the community-based organizations and other stakeholders in the community for building the working groups. And so we'll be doing some very targeted meetings with them, some initial sort of conversations, and getting that going here very shortly. This timeline is the broader community engagement timeline. So the timeline you saw before was where we are for 2023. This is sort of your bigger picture through the end of the comp plan. So we've done the initial outreach. We're going to be doing more of that ongoing into Q2, which is where we are right now. These are those working groups. We're building those relationships. We're formulating those plans. And then in Q3, Q4, we get to do those deep dives. This is where we have pop-up events this summer that will be interacting with the community, where they are. We're going to be having lots of conversations, getting good interactions there, building that trust and getting that feedback. And then Q1, Q2 of 2024, we're going to take what we've heard from this year and process it. We're going to take a look at, you know, where do we need more information? Where do we need more feedback? Where do we have enough? What are the gaps? What are they saying? And then we'll report that to you all, Planning Commission and Council. And then Q3, Q4 of 2024 is we're going to close the loop. So take all of those things that we've been working on, put it all together, and report back to the community how we heard from them, what we heard, and how we used it to make decisions in the comp plan. I'm just going to get into a really brief overview again of those kind of best practices. A lot of times when it comes to comp planning, I think sometimes it gets lost, even with planners, like what is the difference between a policy and a goal? How should they be phrased differently? What do they mean? So just kind of setting that baseline of, and I think even in our current plan, there's some room for improvement there. So just trying to set that baseline of understanding. Again, MRSC quote, I love MRSC. They just really capture some of these statements really well. So I won't read it all aloud, but I think to me, comes out of something like the guiding principles document, the few main things to me are, what are the community values that are shared, and how do those inform the future that the community wants to see? Those are the two really big components in thinking about the visioning process and how we might look at our guiding principles document differently. So in terms of the structure, so obviously the first is the guiding principles or the visioning document that we currently have, is what's really setting that tone and direction for the future. It should be something high-level. It should be something that's looking to the future and describing these shared values in a way that isn't particularly lengthy or in super-big detail. Goals. In terms of goals, this is something that's not currently in our plan, but in terms of the best practice, it really should be an aim or objective. It should be a statement of what you want to see in the end. So for example, for something related to the environment, you would say like, a environment that balances a harmony between the built environment and the natural environment, something kind of general, not super-specific, and it's stating an endpoint. A policy is still a fairly general statement, but it's getting drilling down a little deeper, and it's, what are we going to do to get to our goal? It's more of an action statement. And then the actions that we currently have, which we're going to call implementation measures, are how do we do it? We know what our aim is. We have a path for what we're going to do, but then how are we actually going to do it? So implementation measures are best thought about as more specific, actionable items that you can measure. They have a success metric. So we're talking about a specific program that has a timeline that you can affix funding to, so you actually know it's an achievable thing. So that would be something like if a policy was ensure safe and clean waterways or preserve water recharge areas, an implementation measure would be, all right, so what is an actual program that would achieve that? How? So this section, I just want to talk a little bit about what we touted about with Planning Commission at the 19th meeting and what kind of recommendations came out of that. As a reminder, this is our current vision statement. We looked at the one since the original one, and that from 1991. It looks pretty much the same. The structure's the same. Most of the text is pretty much the same, except for there's one vision statement that was added. That was added in 2015. So that's not necessarily a bad thing, not necessarily a good thing. It's just a thing that the document hasn't changed much since 1991. So it's, I think, provides an opportunity for us to really continue work, not just at the content, but at the formatting. So we discussed a couple of different options for formatting with Planning Commission, and we really came to this point where we all agree that we really like kind of a hybrid approach, something that retained the integrity of the content of the existing vision statement, but created more of a thematic approach with more visuals. So something that's really more engaging to the eye, something that people would actually want to read through the whole thing and really take onto account. So that was the consensus at the end of that meeting, 100% was that we liked that kind of an approach moving forward. And then in terms of the topics, I kind of divided the discussion points into a couple of different buckets of this conversation. One big one was the environment and climate change. Obviously, that's something we're going to do in the new plan. The first one was consolidating some of the statements related to the natural environment. I think there were five that all kind of touched around the edges of climate change and environment without really getting to the meat of it, and it's an opportunity for us to shorten up that document and to make a more robust statement about what we actually really want to see there. Another was kind of a basic, just terminology and language, even in terms like sustainability. What did that mean in 1991 versus what it means now? What did environmentalism mean 32 years ago? What is it now? And then this goes across the board with all the different themes of just looking at the language itself and making sure we're being really intentional about, what does that mean now? Are there better words to be used now? Another one that was brought up was generally, you know, things that are unique to Bothell, and one topic that came up was, well, we do have these really unique systems and connected systems and environmental components. Maybe there's something more specific about that tailored to. Another big topic was this general conversation about human services and then building those community relationships with those services. There was quite a bit of discussion on community safety. What does that mean? Responsiveness of services versus what does it mean to be equitable in community safety? What does it mean to be sensitive to different cultural groups in the provision of safety services? So that was a big topic of conversation. And then also expanding the breadth of what do social services and human services mean? There were a number of different things, like medical services, mental health services. How do we better reflect that breadth of human services in the city? And then the last big bucket was diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. There's a lot of discussion about ADA, expanding what we mean by ADA, the breadth of what we can provide. So one was, you know, just again, with language, being really intentional about language and how we use the words, especially if we're going to be shortening the document. And then again, expanding that emphasis on what inclusivity and accessibility means and all of the different components of the plans. And then, yeah, like I mentioned, expanding language relating to accessibility to encompass all the different forms. There were, and even with the plan itself, you know, how is the plan able to be digested by people? Do we want to have an interactive component? If we do, how do we make sure that folks that have, that are blind can hear? You know, do we have some kind of an audio component to the plan if it's online? We also want to maybe provide it in a PDF form. We also want to have a simplified site for people that maybe don't have great internet service. And then some kind of general overall commentary. One that was brought up was, you know, what does make, what makes Bothell unique, and how is that reflected in the guiding principles? And we felt, staff felt like that was a really great opportunity for community engagement throughout the summer of just asking people. So as a common thing, have it on the website. Get it out of every booth we have. What do you love about Bothell? What makes it special? Why did you stay here? Why do you want to be here? And we think we could even directly use some of the commentary that comes out of that into the guiding principles and really make it a clear reflection of what people said to us and what we hear. Another one that was brought up was, we have this really special relationship as a fairly small jurisdiction with a pretty big university, and that could be an opportunity there to strengthen that relationship and highlight that in some way. Again, the connectivity of trails and waterways. We have a number of regional trails throughout the city, a number of waterways throughout the city, and that is a pretty unique component of Bothell. Document length, everyone agreed, it should be shorter. It should be shorter. And then again, language and terminology, best practices. That was an overall comment we had. So timeline for the guiding principles is what this is. So the spring is really, was wanting to figure out establishing a preferred format. Then we can move forward, create a draft of some kind of formatting, or start to think about how we want to put that together. And then through the summer, affirming those values and principles with the community. And then in the fall, we really want to get to a point where we have a more kind of finalized document that we can then use to begin drafting everything else as that foundational piece. And then we'll begin our, doing our drafting of the actual elements themselves in the fall and the winter. That's when the big work starts, though. So yeah, just as a reminder, we're really hoping to get some feedback on the recommendations that came out of Planning Commission and fill in those gaps and just thoughts on what we talked about in my presentation to open up to discussion.
Quick question. What are the, well, number one, I know you have the calendar of community engagement, the details in the packet, but can you also, is it okay if you publish the locations, and is it okay for us, council members, to attend those different engagement opportunities, just to, even if just flies on the wall or to participate?
Yeah. I don't, I will get back to you if it's not okay, but I don't see why it wouldn't be, but I'll find out.
Okay, cool. Yeah, let us know if it's-
Then you have a better answer.
Yeah, I would encourage participation, all city council members, if you're available. I would be specific about the dates and the format and the type of event that's occurring, how long it will be. So yeah, absolutely. I'm sure we'll hear about more as we go, that we haven't been able to articulate quite yet.
I get it. So I got it from this. There's no, so when the details come out, all the shit, and whoever can attend can attend.
Yeah, totally.
And as a, related to this, when you do your guiding principles, is that thing that's only staff, or can we have like a work session, staff, council?
I think what we'll probably do is, as we're putting that together through the summer with the engagement work, we'll have something more finalized for everyone to comment on in the fall, prior September, when I think we'll have a goal of putting it together, bringing it to Planning Commission, bring it to Council, and doing that as of reading through it and-
I mean, at work, you know, if you want to have something collaborative, I know there's a formal process and all that, but if you, earlier, then if you have to rework anything, you don't have to, you don't have to delay or get crunched in your time, get into a time crunch when you actually have to implement some of this stuff.
I mean, that's part of, again, why getting the early look, too, is to make sure that having touchpoints with the council so that you're able to see how it's progressing and not wait too long. I hear that. And I think we're always going to try and find the right balance between, in the most of council's time, knowing that it is precious, and we have other things on the agenda throughout the summer, and making sure that it's also not precious that you stay, but where am I in this? So we'll be tracking that balance.
Appreciate it. Because related to the conversation, well, here, we did the vision and the priority session, I mean, seemed to go hand in hand with some of that work.
Yeah, the council's given a, a very picture of a vision, of the council's vision. So again, while there is this, there's also then the prescription nature of a comprehensive plan. Certainly, the work that the council's already done is-
So you guys keep talking quieter like it's a competition.
There are others in the room?
In fourteen minutes, we're going to be whispering. Thank you.
But yeah, absolutely. The council's vision will be used and informative into this, and we will make sure that it's clear that this is the same Bothell.
Yeah, that's already something I've been working on, is looking for that alignment already between just what we currently have in that document versus council vision, because they're laying hand in hand.
I think we can also do some interim reporting back.
Yeah.
Given the platforms that we have, we do have an online portal that we're going to be launching, get pretty immediate feedback from the community, and there are ways for us to report back on an interim basis as we hear.
When is that launching, by the way?
Date is May 22nd. Target, target date. To be, to be determined, but that's, that's the goal.
And that will be a really great tool, because that will be something we can use throughout the entirety of the life of this project, even past the summertime, as, just as we're working on anything. And it's really at heart. We can create all sorts of different things. There's like mapping surveys and like all kinds of fun stuff. So, yeah.
So gonna geek out?
Very helpful. Yes.
Yeah, like we were, you know, we've, we've talked about very briefly this, this idea of like what makes Bothell unique, and that's sort of the perfect platform to put that question out to the community and get really candid feedback. Looking at something like that to- Looking at something like that to, to sort of kick us off.
I have a couple of questions slash comments, and I tend to be blunt and, and I do not intend to step on any toes. So if I'm stepping on toes, I'm apologizing now. One, I appreciate the effort for getting community input. I saw the scope, looks great, including mobile home parks, manufactured home parks, which is great. I have been, and here's the part where I do not want to step on toes, but maybe stepping on toes. I've been watching Planning Commission for, I was going to say almost 20 years, but that sounds really old. I'm going to say over 15 years I've been watching Planning Commission. And the current Planning Commission that we have now is pretty one unified voice. Rarely hear any dissenting voice on this planning commission. I've never seen that before. In all the years I've watched Planning Commission, I have not seen a huge variety of opinions there. Now, am I inferring anything from that? No, because it would be like saying, okay, what child don't you want after you've had five kids? And you say, there's a lot of kids here. I'm not inferring that I don't want any of those current planning commissioners, but that voice that you're talking about going and getting from the community is, this is where we're going to hear them, is what you're digging up. And so I really appreciate it. Part of my question is, like on the summer nights out, is there going to be a place, I know how people tend to be is they tell you to your face and they think they've done their job and they go back about life. Is there a place where people can record their comments, write them down? I mean, are you going to include that so that someone who has a good idea, it doesn't get lost because it was buried under a whole bunch of other life that was happening?
Yeah, there's going to be lots of different ways that we're going to be engaging with the community. So in person, we may have something like a comment box drop. We might have a QR code so that they can do something interactive on the portal. These are all different types of engagement. It's not intended to be one note because we're not trying to reach one person or one type of person. So there will be those different tools. The engagement portal will also be running this whole time. So there's always going to be that open door, which we're pretty excited about because we haven't had that as of yet. So I, I think if somebody has an idea, there will be a place for them to communicate that, whether it's at two in the morning or at two in the afternoon at a summer nights event.
Well, I don't want to speak for everybody who has campaigned here. Me, for both times I ran, I would tell people to hold my feet to the fire because I think it's response, that's the way that we ought to be as electeds. People ought to be able to hold our feet to the fire. And so if you have somebody who's really passionate, pass on this message. There are some council members who want you to hold their feet to the fire and please let them know what your feelings are on that. I mean, you have my mission, my request to encourage people to give us feedback. That's really important to have. And then I appreciated your wanting to update the language, this document. How long do we plan for it to sit on the shelf before it needs to be replaced again?
Well, the next COP could update in 10 years.
So 10 years, we're thinking about.
Next opportunity.
Okay. So my linguistic background is like, okay, how fast does language change? I mean, I'm looking at the word, you were talking about updating language and I'm looking at, so here I'm scrambling, think of a word, think of a word, think of a word, and I couldn't, but I, I saw equity up there and I thought, yeah, equity has kind of changed its meaning over time. So I was going to encourage you to be, find timeless words to describe things where you can, but then that's going to take away your goal of brevity and dialing things down. So I don't know how to encourage you on that part.
There may be certain key words that we want to emphasize what we mean when we're using them. So if we use the term resilience or equity, what does that mean in the context of a progressive plan? Obviously, we're not going to have a glossary.
Like a little key, key words in the back or something like that. That would be great because I think that would help people over time if those words are comparatively new in our vernacular or vulnerable to change over time. Describing what they, those mean at this point in time for us is really important. So yeah, that would be great. And that's it. Thank you.
Funny that you said the feet to the fire thing. At one of the middle housing blocks, there was a gentleman who quoted you and I, he said, I'm here, I want this now. Like, it was very funny. So I was like, I know who said that to you. That's one of your phrases. So it resonates with people for sure. I had one, one question about the engagement strategy. So I really love the different kinds of engagement we're seeking. Are we, I say we, I'm not doing it. Are you guys, are you guys going to track kind of how successful you felt those were? So the next time we need feedback, because obviously we'll need feedback from people before 10 years from now, we kind of have like a, like a suite of options, like here's how this worked for the COP plan, so we can try it for this other engagement.
Yes, with a caveat. One of the cool things that I have on this portal, because I think it's really cool and it's really great, the, the portal has all of that data analytics sort of built in. We can also use our data analytics from our website. So like website traffic, you know, if we did this thing here, how did that translate into website traffic? Like, we can see all of those things. With the portal, we'll just need to be conscious that it is a, it is a, it is a curve. You aren't going to see the same results in the first six months that you will in the first six years because of the way those build momentum. So that's the caveat. But yes, we will be tracking to the best of our abilities. It will not be a perfect process, but it will, it should be measurable. Awesome. Thank you. And another component that's common in all different kinds of like COP planning and CDR, planning is having some kind of document in there memorializing the public engagement process. We don't have that currently. So that's something that we definitely want to add is probably an appendix of just, this is all the engagement work we did. This is our process of going through it. This is what we learned from it. This is how we utilized it. Also, so people feel like, oh, I went and showed up at that thing, that go, what did you do with it? So we want to.
Photo of every booth.
We want to make sure that that's really captured and really clear as to like, this is how we did, this is why we did it, and this is what we did with it.
We don't have a roadmap from 2015, we're guessing. No, that was.
We found the document. Not in the plan.
But getting some sort of iterative approach so that we can learn as we move along, especially in in-person events, you know, was pushing people directly, having a booth, interviewing people, having videos, you know, what was the most effective, be instructive the next time we do it.
No, I love that. I don't want to have to reinvent the wheel every time, and I'm sure you guys don't either. And even if you're all, you've all won the lottery by the next COP plan, right? You don't work here anymore. Like, we don't want those people to have to do it.
How are we doing that?
If you figure it out, let me know.
I get a 20% cut.
That means he's buying the tickets.
Very good.
I have some, I have some kind, I don't know, try not to be too pointed questions, but some kind of wonderings that I have and I guess hopes for like where you're headed next. I don't want to, well, I will go in order. Okay, so at the start of your presentation, you said you were drafting a climate change plan. And I would just love some clarification on, I realize that's like a, you have a grant that you're receiving funding for, you have a deadline for it, you're working towards it. Can you tell us how that's different than a climate action plan? And because we, we hear talk about both. So I just love clarification. And if you don't mind, we can make a conversation, so ask questions and then give you a chance to answer. Yeah, because I got more.
Yeah, the climate element is, I see as something really setting the stage for the climate action plan. The action plan is more the implementation component, whereas the climate element is really setting up those goals and policies of what do we want to get out of our climate change goals? What are the, those end results that we want to see as a result of any of the actions we might take? And what are the policies that will get us there? And then that will really help inform how we develop the climate action plan, the implementation component.
Okay. And I know that that is related to HB 1181. Is it required by law to be called a climate change plan? Or is that just kind of how we're calling it?
Don't know.
I mean, we've wrestled with how to assess this and make sure that people will feel that it's accessible to them and meaningful to them. So the words of like adaptation, mitigation, change, we're sort of playing with what works the best. And maybe that's one way to engage with the community over the next few months, what really resonates with people when we talk about climate. Because sometimes it doesn't feel relatable, feels out of control. Sometimes when you use the term climate change, it can throw people off. So we're sensitive to that, but we're not quite sure exactly what to call. I don't think there's anything that dictates what we call the element though.
I think as we're consistent, as long as we're consistent with the requirements of what is going to be required as part of that element, I would assume it doesn't have to be called the climate change element, as long as the content's there.
Yeah, because like the, the terminology is new to me. Previously, when we had talked about this, I'd heard it called like the climate element. And so I'm like, and, and you're, I am sensitive to what you are sensitive to as well, which is like, is this what we really want to call it? And so I would be open to feedback from community, you know, planning for, you know, climate change. Like, I, I don't know what it is, but I would be part of your constituency that would say, I'm uncomfortable with that terminology and would, would welcome something that kind of hits it more, like more solidly. And thank you for the, the insight into like that a climate action plan would be like a, a policy that could be implemented in the future, but this is more guidance and kind of big picture planning, and that would be just a piece of it. So I really appreciate that. I also really appreciate that you went through kind of the, the terminology about vision statements, guiding principles and goals. And, and I would like to see a little stronger, like clarity, I guess, on, on, you know, what is policy and what is like the action and implementation phase? Because that can be like, like, I love policy and implementation, it's like one of my favorite things in the world. I know you. But I thought, like, I, I think there's some stronger, stronger language there to make it clear as, as my feedback.
Yeah, and that, that's sometimes integrated into COP plans, so I'll have like a how to read this document section that will help the reader even understand what they're looking at. That's something that we could even think about integrating. It's just like a one-sheeter going through, hey, these are the components and this is how to read it and what they mean.
Your arrowhead, like funneling it down was beautiful. I really love that. And so I think the visual is strong and I think just having the, like the terminology solid would play really well with that. When it comes to the topics that you brought forth to us tonight, environment, human services, DEI, I think of those as lenses for every element of the COP plan that we can look at, you know, when, when we, I have the, I have the required elements slide up here. Thank you very much for including that. When, when we think of land use, I think of, you know, we need to look at it from an environmental lens. We need to look at it from a community relationships lens and a DEI lens. And so those are, I think, correctly identified as guiding principles that we want to see in our, our future COP plan. And so for me, I don't know if this is helpful to you, but I think of it as each and every of these required components is going to need an analysis through these lenses for us to really feel like it's, for me to feel like it's really comprehensive. And then I had a question about reconciling the council priorities COP plan. Rami kind of talked about that as well. I'm, no, I'm not even going to go there. I'm sorry. Pop culture references can sometimes go very wrong in council meetings, but I'm just remembering folded in, right? We just need to fold in the council priorities with our vision statement. I'm not referencing the name of the show.
Right, that was going to go.
Some people's.
I'm going to say it landed in a few places.
There were some people who got what I was.
Very inclusive.
Amanda and I over here plushy.
It's folded in.
It's folded in. Yep.
The B.
Because that, the, the vision document that we have from 1991 looks like it's from 1991. And, and I do think it is time for a refresh on that. I really love kind of what you're talking about of just making it a little more streamlined, grouping things by categories. That little graphic that you had from San Jose was lovely, you know, could be very fun to see something like that. And, and then I guess kind of to my point about, you know, folding in DEI into everything. I, I heard that we're getting a DEI coordinator in, in the near future. And so I very much, I was hoping that was going to be part of your council report tonight.
You know, we like to have people start their first day before we announce them.
Okay. Somebody, somebody to join us. And, and so I'm just looking forward to, as we're, as we're working on each of these pieces, having our new coordinator weigh in, in each of those areas. So excited about that. I very much agree with you that we should have a, like a little report section at the end. I'm surprised it's not required. Maybe, I'm not surprised maybe that the state doesn't require it, but we should really have a, this is how we engage with our community summary narrative in every document, right? Just as that guidepost. And so I'm really glad that you're thinking of including that. Somewhere between required by state law and we should always do that is where I land on that, on that one. Yeah, thank you every, for everything, all of the work and preparation that went into this. And I'm really looking forward to the next steps when we start seeing some like work product that's implementing our, our feedback. So thank you.
I'll go next. I organize my thoughts just as you have the bullets up here, so I'm happy to see that. First, the Planning Commission staff recommendations. Yes, I agree that 19 vision points is too many. So a thoughtful merging of like vision statements together, I think is going to be welcomed by all, while keeping the components that are there. The visual aesthetic, I think, is good to an extent, though. I think the words, the meat and potatoes of what this is, is the most important thing. I think when you get too visually creative, it works against the inclusiveness and accessibility of the document, screen readers, text to speech, all of that becomes more difficult. So say be aware of the attention there between those things. Consolidating climate change items was called out in there. I think there were five. I think that makes sense. Adding inclusivity, I think, item 19's got belonging in there. So I think that's a quick and easy way to include that word if that word is one that Planning Commission wanted to include. I think it's good. Agreeing that the crisis responder services should be added to item four. Those are new public safety measures that we didn't have in last plan. So I think it makes sense to call that out, the CRC and the Radar Navigator Program. And yes to the, eraser, sorry. New terminology.
Language evolves, right?
Yes, exactly. And then yes to the appendix of the work that went into this. I think for anybody who looks at it later, they would want to know all the work that was completed, all the community feedback that was given, how, how we went about it, I think, would add a lot of value to the document. And then in terms of my comments and recommendations in general, the first one, knowing that it was created in 91, before much of the city that's now the city was brought together. I think we need to nod to two counties in here and the fact that we're one city and two counties. In 91, my family came to Bothell and we were in an incorporated Stomich County in Canyon Park and we got annexed in, in 93. So I think including that in there, that makes us unique, a unique thing. I think there's only three cities in the state that are in two counties. So that'd be a good way to honor that. In regards to U Dub Bothell, we should also mention Cascadia. If we mention U Dub Bothell, it's also very uncommon to have two universities in one town. So they are just as significant and just as value-add to our community as U Dub Bothell is. And I think they oftentimes, I don't, follow the shadow of U Dub Bothell. So they are a four-year institution and they're excellent. In terms of the changes that are made, this is just a personal request. I would love to see a redlined version with comments in the margins when we move things around or change something. I think it helps to understand what changes were made and if they were moved, where they went. Just helpful for digestion of, of the documents that are so long. Just helpful for digestion of, of the documents that's so long. And then the last thing, similar to what council members were and said, I think the bi-monthly working group of six to 10 community members would do well by having, and this is just a suggestion, having each council member maybe suggest somebody from the community that would, is interested in, in serving on that board. There could be three kind of at-large members. And then if each council member weighed in with somebody or kind of sought out interest and then recommended somebody, I think that would be a good way to go about that, just so we get a broad spectrum of folks looking at it and just different opinions and. I don't, I don't have any, I think the, the planning commission, we obviously all select those together. But this is kind of a longer tail project and it's, again, two counties, big city, we all live in different areas of the city. And if we can help bring people into the conversation and I think it'd be fun to select somebody and piece of them in that. That's it.
Most of my stuff was already asked or answered, but I had a question on outcomes, potential outcomes. And how do we measure those outcomes? So as we kind of look through each one of these, how are we measuring what we consider a successful outcome, not successful outcome? Yes? Like public engagement, right? How do we, how do we measure if our public engagement was a success, was successful? How do we measure the outcomes of what we're doing?
I think there's a few ways to measure that. I think we can measure it by quantity, quality and diversity of comments. So how many comments are we getting? Are we getting the same two people that we, you know, have heard from before? Or are we getting a diverse group of people to respond as well as diverse comments and feedback? You know, with, are they all saying the same thing or are we getting a lot of different types of feedback? I think those are really good ways to measure it. And then in terms of quantity, you can track where you started. You know, maybe we start with 10 people coming, getting, getting, giving us feedback at a pop-up event. But then by the third one, we have 30, you know? That, that to me is good progress and that's measurable. I don't think we can say something like, well, we want to have 100 people show up at this event. I don't think there's a way to, to say that we could set that measurable goal and really track that. But I think we can track our progress and what types of things we're hearing and what types of engagement we're getting from people.
Really good example. And I think, as we're, you know, I think that's like an element of this. It'd be good, let's put some thought behind that, the, the staff side around. We're going to do an after-action report on the comprehensive planning process. How would we, how would we debrief? What are the things that we'd want to look for at the end of this process to say, keep or pass? I think it's a great suggestion. It's something we can, we can look at in terms of developing meaningful data for outreach as well as some of the other areas. So what are we doing?
I, I think. I, so, so for me, it, it just, understanding where we have been, where we are and where we're going. I think we have to have context of, as an example, we engaged with 100 people previously. We're engaging with 200 people now. What did the first 100 say versus what the second 200 said? Understanding, to me, just more context. Because it's easy to say, we have a snapshot of where we are right now. But do we have a snapshot of where we came from? And then into the future where we're going as we continue to grow? Having that information as a palette, moving forward for the next time we go through this exercise, I, I believe would be kind of important. So just to me, outcomes, being intentional, understanding those outcomes. When we talk about equity and inclusiveness and all that, what is the outcome that we want to receive from that equity piece, right? Do we want to have X amount of people engaging within our community that are of color? Or you talk about lands, equity in lands, what does that, what does that look, what does, what does the outcome look like? And then at the end, we can measure that up against the before and the after. So that, it's just something that comes to my mind as we have these conversations. Outcome is, is always to me at the top of the list.
And I think we'll probably have more information on that in June when we come to with the racial equity toolkit. It's going to be drafted because that's going to be kind of the toolkit that we use both in our engagement activities and as a part of the foundational component of drafting the plan itself. And in terms of success metrics, I think being really careful about what questions are we asking? And if we're asking a question, why are we asking it? With that, you know, those, that's a lot of what comes into, why are we asking people things in the first place? How are we asking it? Are we getting the kinds of responses we're hoping for? Is the question's making sense to people? If we're doing some kind of like a physical activity with, you know, are, are they understanding what we're doing? Are they getting it? Are they enjoying it? Those, I think are some of the important metrics of like, is it being intentional? To me, that comes down to a lot of like how we're phrasing things and how we're setting up activities and questions. Making sure that if we're asking you something, what are we hoping to get out of it? And is that really going to, is that going to be helpful for us?
So to me, the outcome is they understand we're asking. To acquire, right? So, so to me, when we talk about climate, right? If you say it one way, somebody's offended by it. If you say it another way, they're not offended by it. So how do we ask the question? And what is the outcome that we're trying to get from the question, right? So it doesn't matter if it's equity or inclusion, or if it's climate or whatever it is. I'm just hoping as we move forward in everything that we do, we can set a measure of what is the outcome that we're trying to achieve, right? If we're talking about housing, what is the ultimate outcome that we're looking for in housing? So it just, it's something that it's constantly coming to, to mind. And I'm hearing it more and more regionally now. So I just want to try.
Company corporations to that point, have OPRs and strategic goals and bring some KPIs and all that cool stuff. Now that we're digitizing all this stuff, should be, should be.
Should.
Easy. And they have some other acronyms too.
Sorry. And synergies.
I jumped over the question. At the last AWC conference, the city of Olympia presented about an equity tool. Have you had a chance to review that or take a look at it? It's really pretty awesome. It, it basically breaks down the, and this is obviously for our DA coordinator as well. But it breaks down kind of the engagement process to make sure that we are, and looking comprehensively at our community and making sure that we're reaching out to people who are excluding. So, or who have been excluded. So I would love to get that information to you. I attended the conference with, it doesn't mean I have like the tool.
Council member, I did pass that along to our assistant city manager who's overseeing the DEI program and works with the comms team too. So she'll be able to share that.
Okay, so maybe it will come to you at some point, but it's really cool. I think you'll like it.
So I, before I get started, when is, I worked up a list of items that I'd like to address or like, and some of them seem far too granular for this meeting. I think Kyle probably forwarded along, like, what's the schedule of when you guys are coming back to us for instruction? And like, I am happy to tell you all of those things now, but if there's a better time, I'm also happy to.
Instruction on.
Well, like just specific land use, common things that I would like to see.
The land use component, we are going to be coming to in July to talk about. We'll have more information then. We're starting those conversations with our consultant team. Which is kind of the ground, you know, baseline of, you know, what do we want to see out of our land use? And how do we want to structure it? So we are meeting in the next couple of weeks to kind of go over some of that. We should have some draft recommendations to bring to you in July to talk about in workshop.
I know Steve's in the room. I think we're also coming back with transportation in June.
Yes, June.
So we're, we're planning on coming with elements, not every element per se, but the real key ones to get that run in feedback.
Perfect. Awesome. I will save some of what I've got written down. Yes, to consolidating the goals. Goal is everything. Have a goal. Talked about the vision statement already. I don't want, and I think I've heard this from a few people in a certain, in various ways. I don't want to recycle the 1991 comp plan and the vision statement. Like I'd like to do our own vision statement based on what we care about now and kind of the state we're at now. The world has changed a lot since then and, and change to adapt.
Over twice the physical land area and over twice the population. And that was before the growth management act was state law. A long time ago.
A while.
I was three.
Thank you for filling that in because I was totally wondering and trying to do the math.
I was older than that. Hospital 1181 is getting signed tomorrow. And Jason said something that I really liked, that is something I care about a lot, is resilience is a theme. And he uses, I think, as an example of something. But, you know, in, in all of the ways that we can be resilient, I would like to. And I would like that to be a theme of this comp plan, not just climate resilience, but, you know, financial resilience, transportation. You know, if one part of your system breaks, is there another one that you can go to? So some of the, some of the inherent necessary redundancies in that. I think resilience as a theme is important. We hired a community development director that is an expert in sustainable development. I want a lot of sustainable development in Bothell. So I want you to bring all of that in here and bring us great recommendations that I don't even know what they are yet. But please, please bring that. The other thing I wanted to touch on is the urban three data that we've got. I want to know that we have built a comp plan around future financial sustainability. And I don't know if we're going to be able to quantify that in terms of like how granular we're going to be able to get on that. But I want to know that in 20, 30, 40 years, that we have left a city that is in a better position with the budget than we have been in recent years through the work we've done through this complaint. And the subset, I have some other things that I will tell you in July. That's good.
Second urban.
Thanks for bringing that in.
As a model to, to think through, not just, uh, complaining, that uses one thing. Our development within city. Served by use.
People don't like it when you keep going back to them and asking them to raise their property taxes to provide basic services. So, and we've already had to do that a couple of times. And I would, I would prefer to leave future councils in a position where they don't have to do that. So if we can, if we can look at land use with an eye toward reducing some of that upward pressure that we've seen on taxes. Yes, please.
Return in June, I believe, on the climate element, we'll get a little bit more into detail. I'll be sure to give a little bit more of a, more on sustainability and how the comp plan is going to address it through the lens of transportation, land use. A lot of really great ideas and how that could be teed up for the climate action plan. We do a carbon footprint analysis, greenhouse gas emissions analysis as well. So be in really good position, I think.
Fantastic. Oh, and I wanted to second something that council member Aldrich said a while ago about weaving some of these things into all of the different parts of our, our plan. And make sure that like, that was a really good point. And I just want to second what she already said, about making sure that we look at all of the different parts of our comp plan through these particular lenses that are valuable to our community.
And that was something that we decided early on is we're going to have our standalone climate change element or whatever it's getting called. But we also want to make sure that those policies and goals are integrated throughout all of the elements because it touches on everything. And same goes for equity components.
Yeah, we were really debating at the front end of this, like, we don't want to silo climate into just that element. But yeah, we wanted to give a nod to how important it is. So I think we can figure out a way to weave it throughout.
That's the whole thing. It's all intertwined. Everything you do, every element of those elements, the thing, the sections, doesn't work silo. It's affected by this, which is affected by, it's like gears of a, you know, engine, you know? So a machine, gears of a machine.
I think that we.
Brakes, everything else.
We've talked about during your question setting, right? But like, we were all kind of assigned different topics to talk about. And then we'd have to like stop ourselves and be like, oh, we're going off topic and getting into somebody else's topic because it's interrelated.
You said that we did that staff kept us on, on task.
Unbelievable.
Think about that too, in terms of strategies to show that interconnectivity, would that be pornography that's showing like themes that are ins substantial, that are related to what their elements base to show it? Even though we have, have these elements, when that interconnectivity leads back up to the guiding principle.
And I think you referenced it. I was trying to find it here in the agenda packet, but I saw that message there in the agenda packet. This is just peace. It's going to be very connected with the rest of people we do.
Well, and I think what's interesting too, and now I keep thinking like back in 1991, when most of this, you know, but it's, it's true because there's been a big evolution on how we look at being environmental stewards. And, you know, why we have the responsibility to be more dense here to protect natural areas. That if you build density correctly, people will travel less miles in cars, which is better for the environment. And people will take other routes of transportation. People will like it, and, and it, it's, it's hard to look at the comp plan without that silo of it's just the city. But what we do here does affect the rest of the state because that's part of why we're in the growth area and other parts aren't. And so I think telling that story about how, okay, like here's how density will help the environment. Or if we choose this path to grow, here's the, the trade-off of, of what that does, you know, with our environmental footprint as a city. So kind of telling that story is really important because lots of people, depending on sort of when they got their education or what they follow these days, might not be aware of like, we studied what we've done over the last 30 years and we've learned things and we want to apply them. So I think that that's really interesting as we seek feedback is sort of understanding the journey that person got to providing that feedback. And if there's anything we can explain that will help them follow us along the next journey of where the city goes with this comp plan.
Another thing that I would like to see in there is that kind of an acknowledgement that all of the changes that we make take a long time to get implemented. And we require a whole lot of private development and external things to actually do them. So they take a long time to do and fundamentally, the comp plan isn't for us, for our kids. And kind of looking at what we can do to better tee up future generations to have the same opportunities we did and the same quality of life that, that we've enjoyed in Bothell our lives. Or better, better would be better. Think about that. And, and you know, when we, when we change zoning, like it doesn't mean that, like nothing changes there. A whole bunch of things have to happen after that and it takes decades for these changes to really bear fruit. So just an acknowledgement that these are things that we are doing for future generations, more so than for ourselves.
Nothing better illustrates that than downtown and how downtown plan from 2008 is really coming to fruition before our eyes now, 15 years later.
And I have a baby that is no longer a baby to prove for it.
So I think I'm, I think I'm good. Thank you very much. Looking forward to the next one. Really excited to do this. Like getting to be on council as part of a comp plan update is really cool. And like, I'm, I am super excited to go through this process with y'all. And I'm glad we had you guys here to do it with. I think we've got a really good.
All right. Well, thank you, guys.
Council conversations. Council converse.
I'm just sitting here looking at sunshine. Such an opportunity.
Sounds like shining. Sounds like. Cut the conversation short, like, let's go.
Exactly.
Like go outside and. Right. You're doing a very, there's a direct relationship between short meetings and.
You'll notice that we. You'll notice that like, we all weren't here at five o'clock, lingering for an hour before the meeting tonight.
You have a hero?
I don't have a hero. Do you have a hero? Please say yes.
I think we should find out. I don't know what their names are, but there's a couple. That cleans along Bothell. 145th. Every single morning.
Every single morning.
No way.
Wow. It's clock in the morning, they're out to every single.
Can you find out who they are?
I'm gonna ask you when talking to them.
I'm gonna s- I'm gonna stop and wave to every single car that goes by. Say hi, is the most amazing thing that ever.
Eric's heroes on them.
It's pretty cool. Like they literally clean 145th every morning. Drive by and see them every morning.
What's the age?
They got their vests on, they got their lights on. They're probably in their seventies.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah.
That's pretty cool. So I'll find out, I'll find out who it is.
Yeah.
Should be something for them. It's just.
Absolutely.
It's pretty cool.
I can't even keep my kitchen clean and they're cleaning like the city.
Yeah. They're walking.
Waving.
They, they both do that, every single car that drives by, you just, you're just watching them, just go, wow. That early in the morning, dude.
Are they like, um, is that stretch of road, one of those like adopter roads situations?
If it's not, they should own it. Pretty much.
Honorary, it just, you, yeah.
Yeah, I'll find out, I'll find out who it is. And be kind of cool of them come in and. Every morning, so I just, about you and like, it's pretty cool.
Please do. There's just a, there's a young man, um, on our hill.
There's like, there's no way to do that where I can go to him.
His, I would guess his mom had, she had some neurological degenerative disease. And they were immigrants from Russia or somewhere. And he would make sure his mom would have a walk outside every day that the night would. And this is a little teenage boy. And he's rolling her over the bumpy street, bumpy, you know, street that's in the, in the cemetery so she can enjoy the air. She can hardly even, I mean, she's, she was, uh, had very little motoric ability left. And I was like, I wanna recognize him. And I hate that when there's somebody who's a hero, an unsung hero, um, that gets lost in the shuffle. So inside, I'm panicking, find out who they are, Jamie.
I.
Before they get lost.
I bet I know where you can find them.
Six AM?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know. Well, I think, uh, that's why, Jamie, that helped at that time, so.
James knows the assignment.
I do. I'm all over it. Now I got a, now I got a kid that I Ubered to the wrong spot. Yeah, so. Now he's very mad at his dad.
Whoops, he went to the dentist.
Well, let that, let that be a lesson.
Then he wanted to go to Bothell High School. But I got him, he said, I gotta go to Bothell to watch the senior night. So I thought he meant Bothell High School. He said he meant Both- Popkinie. Their senior night.
Sure, well, I used to take that walk to go to my college, my. To take the bus.
This is a 14-year-old, like, come on.
Yes, adjourned.
I love your, your.
My, my, my replacement gavel.